All right. Good afternoon again. It is 3:10 PM, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Finance and Performance Committee. I am Chairman, Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District. Happy to be with you. I'm also joined by Councilmember Odette Ramos of the 14th District, and then also Councilman Eric Costello of the 11th District, who just stepped out momentarily. But again, we wanted to get started with our important meeting for today, but I will just reiterate, part of our goal for meeting with Department of Public Works is to get an update in terms of, on a quarterly basis, how expenditures are meeting prior projections as well as previous years, and then also, you know, updates in terms of any staffing, equipment needs, also programmatic changes as well. So we are also joined by Margaret Kern, who is staffing the committee. Thank you so much. Also representatives of the City Council President's Office, the Mayor's Office, Department of Finance as well. And so again, we thank you for being here, and without further ado, we'll turn it over to Director Luna for DPW. And if you wouldn't mind, if you could just, as you get started with the presentation, introduce your team, and we'll get going from there.
Thank you, Chair Bullock, and a pleasure to be with you today. A pleasure to be with the council, as well as we can share some important updates on the Department of Public Works. That was going to be my exact ask to our staff, is you'll notice we'll have a few staff members present on some key items for you today. Just a quick summary, some financial information, like the projections you had mentioned, vacancy and overtime information. We'll have solid waste updates, updates from our Bureau of Water and Wastewater. Talk a little bit about our billings and as well as fleet. So very important information. We'll do our best to get through these slides, and for the team, as you're presenting information out, please introduce yourself, your title, so we can move forward. So I'll turn it over next to our CFO.
Greetings, councilmembers. My name is Regent Lee, the CFO for DPW. And the first slide has a comparison of three fiscal years, actuals, and budget. The 23 hasn't formally, FY23 hasn't formally closed, so we're, it's more projections even though they're very close to being finalized. And so it's, I think there's a consistent pattern. Maybe the thing that stands out the most would be for object number five, equipment. And there are reasons why that's sort of an anomaly in this particular graph. And part of it has to do with the fact that there were expenditures for, expected expenditures that will be reimbursed to ARPA. So there were furnishings and furniture spent that, the projection is that once the ARPA funding is processed, has gone through the processing, that will be reversed out or reimbursed. And so that's part of it. The other things are, there are some unbudgeted route, softwares that were expensed. Routeware and, routeware being the main one. And then there are some possible reclassifications that may occur due to Unifier, the project for Unifier, the software for the city. That was, that's currently housed in the general fund, but we're having discussions at this time about moving it to the capital funding, as it's more properly categorized. And so due to those, due to those reasons, object five is, sort of stands out as an anomaly. The next slide shows, some of it is repeat information, but it's mostly to show the first quarter, where we stand as of September 30th, end of first quarter. And again, you'll see the same sort of anomaly with object number five for this, for similar reasons that we saw for FY23. There still needs to be sort of a cleanup for the Unifier expenditure that's hitting object number five. And there, there's still expenditures that are taking place that we are projecting that the ARPA funding, once it's processed, would offset. That's basically what I had.
Good afternoon. I'm Deepi Mora, Chief Administrative Officer. Next slide. As compared to our vacancies in a solid waste bureau compared to last year, our HR team is doing a tremendous job filling these vacancies. As you can see, we've cut them down in half, and our current vacancy rate is at 7%. Next slide. Overtime so far has been fluctuating due to, of course, vacancies. We're trying to get them in control. Additionally, we have staff who may be on leave, whether it's FMLA, A-Time, workers' comp. However, as you can see, it did plateau, and now it's going down. As we are filling our vacancies, we have more control over overtime, and we're hoping that it continues to decrease.
My name is Craig Jeter. I'm the Bureau Head of Solid Waste. And our first slide, talking about our routine services, truck procurement. Briefly, I'm just going to tell you about our, we do have some, two frontload trucks that are expected next month. We have one that'll be coming in February. Director Luna is going to talk about the re-loaders, and I'll, I'll come back and talk about the CIP.
Thank you, Bureau Head. The reason I wanted to bring attention to this slide is there have been changes since just last week. So for the councilmembers that were attending our previous hearing, you, you've seen the same information before, and up until today, it hadn't changed since we did the budget presentation to you back in June. So what are those major changes? I just want to point those out to you. So as you recall, what we had been presenting in terms of status of the 80 new trucks that are going to help us get back to weekly recycling, there was 14 trucks that were originally scheduled to be delivered in December of this year. We just heard back from the vendor this week, and by we, I mean DGS, our Department of General Services. There have been some supply change to those trucks, and so those trucks actually got pushed into January, and then as well, some of those trucks got pushed into February. Now, we're still on track for hitting this target of getting weekly recycling up by Q1 2014, um, Q1 of '24, but I did want to highlight that because that information is a little different than what was just presented last week, but that's off the, the most current and most recent information that we just received from DGS earlier this week, so I wanted to highlight that. We also have a little bit more detail, so 11 trucks coming in January, three in February, three in March, four in April. And then you'll see as well, too, we have 15 trucks arriving in May, 21 in July, and then the remaining balance, which is 18, those are still to be determined. The vendor is still working to give DGS an update on when those should arrive, whether that's going to be towards the end of '24 or early '25. But I did want to take a moment just to highlight that information, since it is new, and for many of the councilmembers and the public, this is information that they just saw last week in the, in the previous version.
Okay, next slide. So our FY2024 CIP. The projects we have, quarantine, quarantine road landfill expansion, you'll see it saying 3.1 million for FY24. Our total cost is 96.8 million. The east side transfer station, that's about a half a million. Total cost is going to be 14.5 million. Our static pipe, our new compost facility, which we graciously accepted our grant yesterday, the total is going to be $5 million. I believe the city's giving us $1 million, and we have $4 million that we got out of the grant. Total cost is going to be 8 million. Our regulatory compliance, $2 million. The total cost is 14 million. And our solid waste facility health and safety improvements, .3 million, but our total is going to be 1.8 million. And as we go to our future request, due to the Department of Planning, our request in December of 2023, we actually will receive, 10.8 million was a total for FY24. 18.4 million was a total in FY23. I, I've read these numbers, I'll read them again, but our total cost for the landfill expansion is 96.8 million. Eastside transfer station, 14.5. The eastern sanitation yard renovation is 5.3. And our rail transfer in a harbor, that's to, to be determined. We still, we haven't gotten there yet.
I'm Paul Sand. I'm the Acting Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. So starting off with our engineering construction management, those are our capital projects. You can see our performance indicators on the, on the table on the right, or table down below. Did want to point out some, some emergencies that have happened over the last few months since the beginning of the fiscal year. You can see we had the Tiffany Run Stinkhole, which was started last year but continues repairs. As I mentioned at our, at the committee meeting two weeks ago, the, the work is, is continuing, but we did have to stop, temporarily stop, stop work because of settlement, ground settlement. And so we have done some redesign on the supportive excavation. There is some additional work, which is caused, which is a higher cost for that project. And then we also have the Cromwell Pump Station. If you recall, we had a fire back in July, and have done repairs to get the station back up in operation. But again, an unexpected cost to us. Next slide. All right, so over onto the wastewater side. We, you'll see, again, our performance indicators in the table below. Just one note on the, the cost of treatment per million gallons, you'll see a slightly higher price. That's because one of our larger contracts for, for operation and maintenance got a late start, which meant that our, we had to continue one of our other operational contracts into the fiscal year. So that, our operation and maintenance contract is, has started. They're going to be ramping up operations, but that was one of the reasons for this higher cost per million gallons treated. All right. Okay, then over at water management, our water division, again, the, you'll see the performance indicators down below. Slight increase in the cost of treatment per million gallons. Again, that went into, part of that cost was from the Cromwell Station. And the, not only the temporary repairs to get us back into partial operation, but then the continuing repairs to stabilize operations at that, at that pump station. You'll see on the top right, some emergency projects, as I mentioned, the Cromwell Pump Station, and then we have some filter media over at our Monobello Plant that needs to be replaced. We have not started that work. This is anticipated to start sometime Q2 of, of this fiscal year.
Good afternoon. My name is Latoya Curtis, Acting Chief of Staff. I will be speaking on Water for All. There's $3.8 million that have been approved for Water for All. 2.9 million of those went to homeowners, and 844,000 went to approved tenants. There were 9,805 applications received. 6,222 were for homeowners, and three, third, I'm sorry, 3,583 were for tenants. There were a total of 4281 approved applications. 3,625 were for homeowners, and 656 were for tenants. Next is Promise Pay. There are currently 2,403 active plans with an average balance of $1,382. The median balance is $953, and we have 93% of our active plans that are on track. To date, we have collected $1.2 million, and over 14,000 payments have been processed. Scheduled payments are at 3.2 million, and $196,000 are due to be paid out through this program. Next, I will speak on our fleet. Due to impacts to COVID, as well as our depleted fleet, which is due to vehicles that are out of age, they've aged out, and are now in need of replacements. And the third thing that we have is a demand for new vehicles for staff. As our HR team has been filling our vacancies, we now have to provide equipment and vehicles to be able to keep up with our crews. Fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, the budgets have pretty much remained unchanged. Next slide, please. An example of, here are our Vector Trucks. These are trucks that are in our water and wastewater system. As you can see, the cost to replace these Vector Trucks, I mean, the cost that we used to purchase them was 1.23 million dollars. And the cost alone for maintenance of these vehicles has almost doubled to 2.3 million dollars. Earlier this year, due to our aged vehicles, we had 50% of our salow eight fleet was in the maintenance department for service. But DGS has done a tremendous job on getting our fleet back on the road. We're back at about 75% of those vehicles that are back in service. A concern of the agency is, because of the aged fleet that we have, there is the possibility of vehicles breaking down and not being able to account for those vehicles without having the new fleet in stock. The numbers that you see in the chart below are the number of aged assets per bureau, the number of vehicles, and the equipment. These totals do not include the vehicles that are out of service. In the last slide, we have had to supplement our trucks that are not being able to be replaced due to the supply chain issues through vehicle rentals. To date, we have rented out $1.6 million in rentals, and this is, from '21, we rented out $60,000, which has a continuous fee that rolls into '22, $1 million from last year, and it'll be 5K through the end of this year. So a total of 1.6 million to recover for support, the missing and unrecoverable vehicles.
Thank you, team. And Chair Bullock, I forgot to make one point at the top. We did have a slight edit to the presentation, so we did send that to the staff, so that will, that should be there in your inboxes. But with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions.
Well, thank you very much. Also, want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Schleifer of the 5th District. So I will jump back into the presentation. There was one part that I did want to get a little more explanation on. So looking at the FY24 target of the 45,000 linear feeder wastewater collection system to be rehabilitated or replaced. And then you'd mentioned that there was some issue, and it's been stopped because of sediment. Was that correct? Can you talk about, or what's happening with that in terms of the, I see the zero, but what's happened with the target versus the actual?
Yeah, so for our records, we consider a pipeline to be rehabilitated once the project is complete. So we have projects that are ongoing now. Pipeline is being rehabilitated, but again, we don't count it as completed.
Until it's fully complete. So it's still, so you're in, you're actually in the process of doing the complete 45,000. They just aren't completed as of yet?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then what's, what's the, what's the timeframe in terms of completion, just ballpark? Where do you, where do you think that it'll be done?
We have multiple projects, so they're completed throughout the year, the fiscal year.
So throughout the fiscal year, but you, you anticipate that it'll be completed?
Correct. So we might have a project being completed over the next month or two months. That might be X number, X thousand feet, another X number of thousand feet in another three, four months. It's just a continuous process for us.
So let's say, so if we met again, say, in two months, would, it would show a different number? So it's constantly being updated, is what I would expect?
If it would help, I can get you a list of our projects for the current fiscal year, what we anticipate for each project, and the completion date.
Okay, no, that'd be helpful. So I appreciate that. And then let me ask another, a different question, and I'll go to other members of the committee. So one piece that I've always been concerned around has been water bills, and I'm glad you talked about Water for All, but also the, the water bill collection. So can you, can you talk about where that is? I know it was about 186,000 delinquent accounts, but then there's a couple hundred million that were owed. Just where we expect, where we are with that, what our expectations are, and how we kind of close that gap?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a first stab at that, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to the team. If I miss a point, please feel free to add. So overall, the team has been doing a great job of getting the billing system completed. We're, we're in the midst of completing a UMAX upgrade, which is going to also help and provide some more tools for us in order to, to make sure that the billing system is, is performing at the level it should be. The team has done great work in training, bringing in additional staff, and making sure that all of the bills are going out timely, that we're responding to customers accurately. One of the new things that we recently just started in terms of delinquencies is, is sending out net letters and notifications to commercial accounts that have come behind and have not kept up with their payments. Those commercial accounts, just like residential customers, are all open to participating in Promise Pay. Promise Pay was a new program that we brought in earlier in the fiscal year, I'm sorry, earlier back in January. As we've mentioned in the slide, and at 1.2 payments collected through Promise Pay so far, just for residential accounts. So over time, what you'll likely see as well is that number to go up as, as larger properties, commercial properties also jump in and start participating in that program as well.
You were going to add, oh, you got it all? Okay, so I do have one follow-up for you, though, in terms of Water for All. You'd mentioned applications that have been approved versus not approved. What were some, what were the reasons why folks would not approve? Was it just financial, or can you walk us through that?
There's a requirement, so if they didn't hit the eligibility requirement for the finances, they would be denied. And if they have missing paperwork or documentation to prove that they're eligible, they would be denied and asked to, to supply additional information.
And then have folks gotten the additional information and then reapplied, or what's that process like?
Water for All applications are not approved through DPW. They're actually handled by Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. So I'm not really sure their full process. I don't know if Milton is here.
And we're joined by the Mayor's Office. Okay.
So I don't know the intricate details of, of their approval process, but once we get their approval, we process the payments through DPW.
That, that's helpful. I do want to turn it over to other members of the committee. Are there other questions that folks have at this point? If not, I'll keep going. Did you, I know Councilmember Ramos has a question, of course. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to Water for All, we have had a lot of complaints about two things. One is that there were residents who were getting the BH2O but are no longer eligible for the Water for All. Can you talk a little bit about that? And then also, for some reason, the Water for All, for the, for the tenants, I understand, it's got to be a one-time thing. But for homeowners who are used to having the discount every month, that's not occurring. They're getting it as a one-time. And it's actually not as much as we used to get for, under BH2O. So can we talk about those two things? We were supposed to have a hearing on it the other day, and of course, we had to reschedule, so you'll excuse me. We're asking the questions here.
It's okay. So the first question, the requirements are different for Water for All than they are for BH2O. So someone could possibly be eligible for one and not the other based off the eligibility requirements.
Is that an income difference?
Yes, it's the income difference, yes. I thought the Water for All was more generous.
So people will have the same income regardless of what program. It's the requirements of the program.
Understood, but I thought that the requirements were more generous underwater for All. I'll look into that. Go ahead. Yep. And then the, a piece about the one-time payment versus monthly.
Yes, so the team is looking into that from a legal perspective, based off the legislation. I think our team was informed that we were okay to process it that way, but I do know that there's an outstanding question they were waiting to get clarity on, if it could be a monthly payment or just a one-time payment.
Okay.
And I can get back to you with the answer on that.
Okay. And then my second question, Mr. Chair, was, I don't, I know that we're really concentrating on general fund here, but I have some questions about the enterprise relative to water. My biggest question is how much we've been getting from Baltimore County in terms of water income from them? So, right, we have, there's two things, right? We have what they are charged, which the rate is set by Baltimore County. It is not set by us, which is crazy, but that's, you know, something that I'm hoping that we address soon. And then the other piece is that they are supposed to then give us the difference, if I understand correctly, the difference between what is collected through the rate pairs, rate payers, and what is coming in from that sub, you know, the actual cost, right? And that the cost includes not just running the system, but also capital costs as well. Have we been paid? How much have we been paid, and how's that going?
No, thank you for that question. What we can do with the team is provide that level of breakdown for you, just so you have it. And I believe we do have it, our CFO can correct me if I'm wrong, we could provide that for past fiscal years, too. So I think similar to how we presented that information off the first chart, if you like that format, we can do a similar fiscal year comparison of
That would be super.
Comparisons between the city and county? Okay. And, and yes, the exact points that you hit, the cost difference there, there's a true-up process, and then as well, there are portion for capital costs. So we'll work with the team and provide that, that level.
Yeah, because I'd also like to see if that actually is the right amount, right? I mean, are we actually getting what we're supposed to be getting from the county, which I don't believe we are, but I'd like to know.
So, so I'll put in a slight plug for something that's a little timely for tonight's meeting. So the task force, there's a reg, I guess I'll provide context first. There is a regional governance task force that is looking at the water utility in the system. I know that question did come up during the conversations. There's a, WSP is an independent consultant that's been working with the task force. They did look at that information as well, too, based off of their assessment and summary that the cost between the two entities, Baltimore City and Baltimore County, were, were very closely aligned.
I'll be listening in on that meeting tonight, and then also interested in the, the data as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate one point, and then I'll go straight to Councilmember Schleifer. So just to make sure that we all heard the same thing. So you mentioned that there were, was 14 trucks that were delayed due to supply chain issues, and then that we did expect them to be delivered so that recycling could resume January, February, is that?
Yes, so thank you for that, Chair. If, I don't know if we could pull back up the slide, but this was going back to slide nine for today's presentation. So what we've been doing ever since our June budget hearing is providing a high-level summary of the trucks that we have ordered in order to help return to weekly recycling in, in quarter one of '24. And so the chart that you see today is different than the one that, that council saw last week. And that's because this, earlier this week, we received an update from the vendor through our partners at DGS. So as you recall, from last week's presentation to the council, we had stated that 14 trucks were going to be arriving in December of '23. And the slide that you see up here today, you'll notice that December is no longer included on this chart. What happened is those trucks are being delayed right now for current supply chain issues. Most, the majority of that 14 are now pushed to January, so you'll have 11 trucks coming in in January. You'll have three trucks coming in in February, and another three coming in in March. That's, that's your, your Q1 of '24. As long as those trucks stay on schedule, based off of the current estimate from the vendor, then we are still on track to resume weekly recycling in Q1 of '24.
Here, thank you. Councilmember Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a director, when are we starting weekly recycling?
In Q1 of '24.
So what, what is the, like, what's an approximate date?
So it'll be heavily reliant on those trucks that you see on the slide. So the 11 that come in in January, the three that come in in February. So you're looking at a date in Q1 of '24, likely towards the, the later part of Q1 of '24.
Okay, so what's, what's the last date of Q1 of '24?
That would be the last day of March.
Okay, and so do you believe that you're going to start before the last day of March?
Like we've stated, we'll start in Q1 of '24, so yes, that'll be some date in, in that Q1 of '24.
Okay, and so I'd also like an update on where we are in the information I requested in last week's hearing. Do you have that, and timeline of when I'm going to get that information?
Yes, I was reviewing that same information earlier today. I'll have an update for you before, before the close of business on Friday.
Thank you. And then, you know, just a high-level question about these trucks. So if I can take us back two years ago, you know, we had trucks driving throughout the city, picking up weekly curbside collections as the law requires, and then all of a sudden, that stopped. And the reason we were given back then was that a lot of employees were out because of COVID and related stuff. So what happened to all the trucks that were operating then? Where'd all those trucks go that were able to pick up the curbside collections then that are not now?
Right, so, so a couple of things there, and I'll do my best to provide that high-level summary. So a different model, right, between the previous version of weekly recycling, those were the yellow bins, right? That's about 40,000, if I remember correctly, 40,000 participants throughout the city. You have blue bins that were deployed later. That's 170,000, right? So a much bigger difference in terms of the customers that are providing recycling. So a much bigger difference in terms of the customers that you're providing recycling services to throughout the city. We average, our truck fleet for routine services averages around 100. And I'm going to use whole numbers here because I forgot the detail off the top of my head. But we average about 100 trucks. We've had about half of those trucks in the shop every single day. So you're already doing the service with half the trucks that are available to you. And that's because these trucks have, a lot of them have gone well beyond their life cycle. That's why you've, that's why the city has ordered 80 new trucks. That's a pretty aggressive order at one time to make. And so our partners at DGS has done the best job that they can in order to keep these trucks on the streets. Most recently, they've been able to average more towards the 70 mark in getting about 70 trucks operating. That's, that's a, that's a new development that just recently started happening that is great news for us if we can get those trucks out on the road much longer. But we're really needing those additional new trucks. Any issue could happen with, with these, right? A lot of them, like I mentioned, are well past their lifespan and life cycle. So getting these new trucks is what's really critical for, for the city in order to return to weekly recycling.
So that's a, that's a new thing that we've heard. I mean, not, not the first thing you said, the part where you said we went from the yellow bins to the blue ones. I know your strategic consultant's the one who rolled that out. So, you know, we're going to move, move past that, that poor decision that, that was made then. But this is the first time that at least I recall hearing that 50% of the trucks at all time are in the shop. That seems like a pretty significant issue that is something that we should have been aware of, that we could have taken up with DGS. I mean, if 50% of the fire trucks or 50% of the police cars were in the shop every day, like you just mentioned, we would have like a state of emergency going on here. So this is the first time I'm hearing that 50% of the trucks are there. I mean, certainly, that's an issue that could have been resolved. We could have had other shops fixing those trucks. So what's, what's going to happen with these new trucks that come in? Are you going to be selling off these 50% of the trucks that are using the shop? Are you going to be keeping them around? What are you doing with all those trucks?
We can get that level of detailed information from our partners over at DGS. Right now, in order to get back to weekly recycling, we need to maintain that level of trucks that are currently deployed, right? So that 70 trucks that are out there on the street today. You're going to get another 11, 30, just a little over a dozen trucks in that first quarter of '24. And those trucks plus the existing fleet is what helps us get in there. Once we get to the, fully exhaust the full 80, right? Once you fully exhaust those full 80, then some of the ones that are well past their lifespan that are having the most issues, those can be taken off, taken off the street. Likely, they would use those for parts if there's a part from that truck that's useful, can then go back in and help service one of the other aging trucks that are still within the fleet.
So you're saying you have on any given day 50 trucks, but you need 70?
I was saying, most recently, up until maybe about the past few weeks, most recently up until the past few weeks, the, the routine services was averaging about 50 of the, 50 trucks available each day. DGS is, like I said, has done a tremendous job recently of doing their best to get as many trucks on the road as possible. We've been maintaining about 70 trucks most recently in the past few weeks, but that has been a newer development just in the terms of my tenure here.
And Councilmember Schleifer, if you don't mind, and Director Luna, just to add to this vehicle conversation, I know we've talked about street cleaning as well and a number of vehicles that have been down as well. Can you also add that into this conversation in terms of where we are? Because I know that that's impeding our ability to do street cleaning as well.
Just want to, one clarity, street sweeping?
Street sweeping, yes.
I'll turn that over to our Bureau head or staff for that one.
Thank you for that question. We're actually in, actually in good shape with our street sweeping right now. Today, at our Cleanstat meeting, we confirmed that there were, I believe, 11, 11 new trucks, 11 new sweepers.
Right, right. Yes, that we ordered. So we have those new trucks coming, but we're, we're sweeping accordingly. There's no emails that are going out saying that we're, we're not sweeping. Normally, if we, we can't. Now, there might be some delays because of equipment issues, but as far as sweeping on time, on schedule, we're taking care of that.
Okay, so I don't want to be anecdotal, but I know, I'm thinking about an email that I got yesterday about a street that was, that was half-done. And I know when we had a meeting, I know part of the issue that we talked about was that some, sometimes there are vehicles that may be down, but to let you know about that. So we can go ahead and do that. I know, Councilman Costello, I think, and then Councilmember Schleifer, if you had a follow-up. But yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, do we, I think we do, do we have all of those mechanical street sweeper vehicles? Do we have GPS installed on them now?
We do.
Every one of them?
I would say so.
Yeah, every single one of them.
Outstanding. Thank you.
And that was about the root wear that you were talking about before, right? Is that, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Schleifer, do you have a follow-up? Or good? Okay. And we've also been joined by Councilmember McCray. Thank you for being here of the second district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, Slide 13 caught my attention because it says Tiffany Run Sinkhole, which is in my district. I'm familiar with what's going on there. I appreciate that everybody's working so hard to get that taken care of and hope that we have the full use of Lake Monobello by spring. That would be amazing, along with the new playground, which isn't your issue, but we're getting there. But I had a question about the linear feat of wastewater collection system. I don't know if that was asked before, but I just want to understand that the target is not being met here.
Yes, thank you for that question. Noah, so when we consider a pipe complete, it's when the entire project is completed. So we have projects that are ongoing, they're active project, active construction projects now. So when they're completed, that's when we say that the pipeline has been rehabilitated or repaired or replaced, whatever.
So you're in the middle of a bunch of projects, is basically what you're saying?
Correct.
And that this will be completed, though, by fiscal '24?
By the fiscal, by end of fiscal '24.
Okay, gotcha.
And Councilwoman, our Bureau head did mention earlier, he can provide a breakdown of each project and then the anticipated total linear feat by project. So we'll be getting that as a follow-up.
Thank you, thank you. That's great, thank you. I didn't realize that that was asked before, but thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm fine.
All right. Thank, thank you. Let me ask a different question. So I know that there was a budget amendment for some additional funds for about $300,000. I'm just curious in terms of, if you had additional funding, what would that be used for in terms of the department?
Do you provide some more additional, there was a budget amendment? Or can I get some more details on that part?
Councilman, are you, are you talking about some of the carry-forward actions?
I believe so, yeah.
So one of the actions that was part of the, that was approved by the Board of Estimates yesterday was $250,000 to support composting efforts for the Department of Public Works. The Board of Estimates also yesterday approved a supplemental appropriation for $1.9 million that, and that will come to be introduced with the council at an upcoming meeting and come to this committee. That supplemental appropriation is intended to make up for the deficit that DPW incurred in their general fund budget for fiscal '23.
Thank you for that clarity, exactly what I was looking for. Appreciate that. And then also, on a note, I don't think we have anybody signed up to testify. Doesn't look like anyone online to testify or has any questions. Oh, one other thing, and I did, I'm glad you talked about this earlier. What is, you talked about the, the filling of vacancies and then that also corresponded to the reduction of overtime. So we're glad to see the reduction of overtime. What do you think has been the keys to success in terms of filling those vacancies? Because it seems like a, like a dramatic shift.
Our HR team has just been doing an excellent job at filling those vacancies. Like in September alone, they participated in four different job fairs just to, you know, introduce DPW as the employer of choice and just showcase all the vacancies we have. And they've, they've just been doing a tremendous job in that, so.
And our CA, Chair, if you don't mind, our CA was being a little modest. So I'll jump in there and help. The, if you just look back at Slide six, Slide six, you see a breakdown just for solid waste vacancies. Solid waste, as you see, has about 758 positions. If you took solid waste out and made it its own standalone agency, it'd be one of the largest agencies within the city. And that's a 7.12% vacancy rate. That is, that is, that is excellent, that is an excellent number for us to have, a 7% vacancy rate in solid waste, especially with how critical it is for us to fill all of those positions, the vacant positions, that are going to help us get back to weekly recycling.
And then historically, we've seen significant turnover in solid waste. Are we still seeing that level of turnover? Or if not, what's the difference? Or what are we seeing now?
We haven't noticed it in terms of our most recent reports that we've, we've seen as far as that level of turnover. So we're doing a much better job recently of, of making sure we're attracting good talent and retaining that top talent. And it's mostly credit to, like, like our CA would mention, the, the great work that our HR team has been doing and the great leadership out of our Bureau of Solid Waste.
Thank you. I'll give folks a few more seconds if there are any burning questions. I don't see any, but what I will say is, we do recognize that Department of Public Works is one of our most critical agencies. You know, every, every citizen of Baltimore winds up being touched by Public Works one way or another. So again, we appreciate all that. Yes, Councilman Costello.
I did have one question. The, what is the, do we have the CFO here? Mr. CFO, thank you. What is the total percentage of the Enterprise Utility Fund revenues from water, sewer, and stormwater that are reallocated in a year back to the general fund? Is there, isn't there like a certain percent? It's like 3% or 7% or something, single digits?
I'll have to get back to you on that as a follow-up.
Regent, I, it's 6%.
It's 6%?
Yes, sir.
And it's, and it's all three of the funds are 6% across the board?
It's 6% for water, 6% for sewer, 0% for stormwater. But we can verify that.
I know why we do that, because we're covering shared costs, whether it's IT or real estate or vehicle fleet, or HR or procurement, those things. But
Are you talking about the general fund contribution to the city overhead?
No, yes and no. I think you said it a different way than I understand it. So in a, in a given year, the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund generates about $30 million in revenue? Does that sound right?
Sounds about right.
It brings in 30 million in receipts?
Right.
And then sewers, like, what, 320 million? I'm just kind of spitballing.
That's in the ballpark, yes.
And water's like 260 million?
I believe you're correct.
Right. And so those are receipts that come in. And because they're in an enterprise utility fund, they're required to be expended on activities associated with them, right? So like, the stormwater fund, we couldn't use that to pay to put up new stop signs.
Right.
But we could pay for capital maintenance of street sweeper vehicles, right?
Right.
Because it's associated with that activity.
Right.
Or, for instance, sewer, we could use the funding for a public education campaign to not pour grease down your, your drain, because it negatively impacts the, the pipes, right?
Right.
So there's a percentage of those total revenues that come in that are transferred to the general fund, which are intended to cover some of the shared costs, those shared costs being things like fleet and real estate and IT, procurement, HR, et cetera, each year. Marsha, did I get that right? I think?
I, I think that's, it's for services provided to the utilities, for example.
Right, so like when, when
IT work.
Yeah, so like HR, some cost
Processing billing, payments through finance, et cetera.
It's to cover, I think you were saying it, Mr. CFO, the, the same one? It's to cover those shared costs.
I could only speak to the general fund activity. I think we have to get back to you about the utility fund to get, Marsha Collins may be correct, we just want to verify that.
Yeah. No, she's definitely, she's always correct.
The general fund activity, the general fund activity is we make a million-dollar quarterly contribution to the city funds to cover
Who's we?
DPW.
But you're not speaking on behalf of the Enterprise Utility Fund, right?
No, I, again, today, the orientation was towards the general fund activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know you weren't prepared for this question, that's okay.
Right.
No, no, we're good, we're good. So, anyway, under the assumption that Ms. Collins is correct, which I do believe she usually is, a certain percentage of the receipts that come in, that go into that, that bucket for each specific enterprise utility fund?
Yes.
Those go back to the, to the city's general fund to cover shared expenses such as fleet and HR and procurement, IT, all that good stuff. I'm curious what the, why that number is 6%? Is that something that the city just budgets every year? Or is it codified somewhere that that's a requirement?
I recall asking that of a former person in finance, so I'll defer to finance, but it's my understanding they actually did a study to determine what that
That was a suggested amount, Director?
Yeah, Councilman, no, excellent, excellent questions here. Obviously, we need to go back and pull some of this information together, so we'll summarize it for
Totally, totally. Can you get me a response by next Fri, no, there's a holiday. I'm in no rush.
Okay, we'll get you the written response as soon as
Like, end of November?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, and when you, and, stop. And one other thing, because water and sewer are six, let's say they're 6% and stormwater is 0, I'd be curious why stormwater is held harmless in that.
Yeah, we can, we can look at the numbers and work with the team
Walk me through it and explain it.
Exactly, no. We can pull that information and go to
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Until my arrival, I was trying to follow very closely, and I know that Slide nine, the fleet procurement was covered pretty well. I just had a, a quick question if this was already answered. Thank you for your patience. I know that these numbers have changed, but I wanted to know, once the, once the load packers, the easy packers, excuse me, the easy packs and the mini packers actually arrive, how long does it take until these vehicles are actually operational and they're able to be utilized on our routes?
Now, excellent question. So our partners at DGS give us a seven-day turnaround. So once the trucks come in, it takes about seven days to retrofit the trucks, and then they're at our yards.
And that's for, that's for each section? That it can take up to seven days? Will it just take up to seven days for each of the three?
That is for the load packers. I can work with the team and get the updates for the front-end loaders and the, and the mini packers.
Okay. If we can just have that as a, as a request, as we're trying to work, hey, I'm confident that you guys say you're going to be up by quarter one on these items, but I just want to make sure that we know exactly how long this takes from start to finish, not just the estimate arrival of the trucks. Thank you. And that was it.
I'll just, I'm glad you asked that question, because I think oftentimes, you don't think about if there is a delay between just a vehicle arriving that's going to go out the door that quickly. So again, thank you for that, that clarity. Councilman Costello?
The, Chief Moore Jackson, I think, would know this, but, or maybe Chief Jeter. What's the total number of mechanical street sweepers that we have in the fleet?
36 is what we have in the fleet.
And what do we need on a daily basis? What's the max day per week that we need?
We need 30, right? Yeah, we need about 30 minimum.
We need 30, yeah. And then give me the same numbers, please, on trash and recycling trucks?
You want to know what do we need each day? Or
Tell me the total number of, of the large-size trash trucks and tell me what day of the, I don't care which, it's not relevant which day of the week it is, but what's the max number of those that we have in use at any given time?
Well, I believe we have 260 total, right?
I have the number for you, Councilmember. So it's just today for our load packers, we had 63 available trucks out of 105 total in the fleet.
So we have 105. We only had 63 available. But how many do we need on a given day for optimal operation?
70 would be ideal.
Okay. So we have 103?
Correct.
We have 103?
105, 105.
We have 105. We need 70 to make the day go smooth. We're, today, for example, we're running at 63. Tomorrow could be 61, or it could be 66. But today, we're at 63. Okay. So that's helpful. So has DPW made requests of the administration to order additional fleet for, for when these things happen? Because we, it sounds like we know we have 105, but 42 of those are down.
Right. And so that's where the 80 come in, into play here. That's the 80 that you see on Slide 9. That's the 80 load packers. What you'll likely see us do as well in future years in terms of the city's master lease fleet, master lease and ordering new vehicles, is getting more trucks through that process, so that you're staggering those out, so that you don't have a massive order going through at one time. And so that's, that's ongoing conversations that we'll be having with DGS over the next few years, is how do we plan appropriately for what we anticipate the need will be in future years?
Do we, do we know how many we should, should be ordering annually so that we can stay ahead of the curve?
So that's really not a, an annual number. The life cycle of a garbage truck is about eight years. So you try to, maybe in a year or five or so, I mean, if your maintenance costs on that particular truck is more than what the truck is worth, then obviously it's trying to, it's time to start getting rid of it. But the life cycle typically is about eight years, and a year around, around six or so, five or six, that's when you start making preparations to get rid of it or replace it.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Let me ask a question a different way. If we have 105 trucks, how many of those trucks are older than six years?
I don't have that breakdown, but I can tell you, yeah, I'll just get back to you. I'll get back to you on that.
I'm guessing that would help drive the answer to my previous question about what we need to be asking DGS for, and probably the people you want to be asking is finance, not DGS, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Doesn't look like we have any more questions, but I will pause for a second to make sure there aren't any. And then the one last question that I'll ask, is there anything that's coming up in the future that we should be aware of, prepare for, or just keep in mind?
That's a great question. As you know, DPW, like, I think you mentioned this, Chair, at the, at the top, is where we touch everyone throughout the city, and not just the city, but the region. There's always different initiatives that we have rolling out. Our, our Chief of Legislative Affairs, Marsha Collins, does an excellent job of keeping the council up to date. So as we have new initiatives rolling out, you'll be seeing those emails from Marsha.
Awesome. Well, look, thank you so much for your time today. Thank you for answering our questions. We appreciate the ongoing communication and look forward to talk with you again soon. So take care. And at this point, we will stand in recess.